Good evening. I have seven o'clock and I'm going to call the meeting order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Greg David.
Present.
Mr. Tyler Dean.
Here.
Ms. Emily Hamburg.
Here.
Mr. Tom Schmitz.
Present.
And Mr. John Welch.
Present.
You have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you. This evening, we have Bella resident and pastor Mark Posen to here to lead us in prayer.
Let's go to the Lord in prayer. Father, we just thank you so much for this day. Father, we just want to continue to remember and pray for the comfort of those families of Flight 5342 and the military aircraft personnel and their families. We pray for your comfort, for your care, for your continued peace on those families. Father, we think of all of the emergency personnel who responded. And we think of our own personnel or emergency responders here within our community. And we're thankful for those who are called to public service and safety and continue to lift them up before you. Father, thank you for the mayor, for the city council members, the city administrator and staff for their dedication to this community. Father, we pray for this meeting, for just your wisdom. Father, as discussions take place, decisions are made, Father, just provide your guidance and direction and the benefit for those who call Bel Air home. Father, we thank you for all you do, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please join me in pledge allegiance to the America flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited in its essence.
Next item on the agenda is to determine agenda additions. Are there any additions for the agenda? And here, none will move on to consent agenda. So in addition to the minutes of July 21st, 2025, city council meeting, the consent agenda also contains revised petitions and related resolutions for paving and water distribution improvements to serve Skyview at Block 49, second, phase two. And later in this meeting, the bids for these projects will come before the council for consideration. If approved, the cost of the improvements will be spread as special assessments against the benefiting lots. Any questions or discussion for the consent agenda? And if there are none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Dean, or David.
I'll motion to approve the consent agenda as listed and authorize the mayor to sign.
A motion by Mr. David, a second by Mr. Schmitz. All in favor say aye.
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 Posen sign. Motion carries five to zero. Discussion and approval of appropriations ordinance. So this appropriation ordinance encompasses expenses from January 15th through January 28th and one payroll cycle. The expenditures amounted to $680,193 and no reported expenses for infrastructure costs for new developments were paid during this time.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Dean.
I move we approve appropriation ordinance number 25-02.
I'll second.
I have motion by Mr. Dean, a second by Ms. Hamburg. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posen sign. That motion carries five to zero. City requested appearances, so we do have two city requested appearances tonight. On October 8th, 2024, Bel Air City Council approved a contract with professional engineering consultants, also known as PEC, to develop reconstruction designs for Woodlawn, including measures to manage sub-surface water, reinforce the road structure, and prevent future issues. For Mr. Mayberry, Ben Mayberry from PEC is here to provide an update. And follow him and Stevens, our city engineer, will present her recommendations for short-term improvements to we can implement. Mr. Ben Mayberry.
Good evening, Mayor and council. So Ben Mayberry, I'm the vice president of municipal transportation engineering at PEC. I have here with me Jason Fundis, who is the project manager on the Woodlawn project, and also Bob Henthorn, our vice president of geotechnical engineering. Just a quick overview of our scope. So we are to deliver concept plans and supporting documents for roadway and storm sewer improvements along Woodlawn Avenue from 37th to 45th. We started this work in October and got the fieldwork started in November of 2024. Our initial concept review with staff is anticipated for March of this year, '25, with concept plans due in April of '25. We have been providing bi-weekly updates to city staff throughout the project thus far. The project is made up of really three key components. Survey and the purpose behind the survey, it's necessary to develop engineering plans based on the current conditions. So we've completed the aerial and mobile LiDAR and have completed 90% of the additional field survey and processing. So that portion of it's about 90% complete. On the geotechnical engineering, this investigation is necessary to pinpoint areas of concern, also to develop an understanding of the existing roadway pavement and the underlying soil conditions. This information is going to inform our proposed design. The initial fieldwork and drilling is complete. That included monitoring wells and pavement cores. And we're continuing to monitor the pavement or the, sorry, the monitoring wells for the water levels on a weekly basis and then also after rainfall events. The geotechnical investigations are about 75% complete with final recommendations from that geotech report pending the results of the information from the groundwater. The recommendations from that geotechnical report will include excavation and pavement design parameters, soil stabilization, along with underdrain design parameters. And then finally, we have our concept design. We've begun our design. Jason's leading that effort. And we're developing drawings for that, typical sections for the roadway, underdrain details, plan sheets for those proposed improvements. We're estimating that to be about 25% complete at the time, right, currently. So again, the remaining schedule, we'll have the geotechnical report, the initial concept review with staff in March, and then the final concept delivery in April. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone from the council have questions for Mr. Mayberry?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Dean.
Ben, going along the same theme of timeline. So concepts done, final concept in April. What is the projection of what a final design would be, just rough?
Yeah, so that's obviously going to depend on the final concept, but we're expecting that to be completed this year.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmitz.
So have you seen anything that is surprising you in this test round versus what we had done in the prior? I mean, is things kind of going as expected? Is there anything unusual occurring?
So far, and I don't want to speak for these guys entirely, but from what I've observed, it's been kind of confirmation of the previous testing results that we've obtained.
Okay.
Has rain been an issue at all?
Just that we haven't had enough of it, really, you know. We had some snow melt in recent weeks and then really just one rainfall event last, what, two months or so? So it's better to have more data, obviously, for the analysis. But it hasn't caused any issues otherwise.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Mayberry? No, thank you for the report. We appreciate your taking time to come and tell us the update of what's going on there.
Thank you.
Look forward to the final, moving forward. Ms. Stevens.
All right. I was asked to come before you and provide a rough estimate, kind of a guideline for patch repairs on Woodlawn. I did go through it with the police chief, as well as our public works director. As we all know, the smoother the pavement is, the faster people drive. They've already been clocking speeds of 80-plus miles an hour. So, you know, just that it's a little surprising.
So if they're hitting 80 miles an hour, they cannot complain about their tires and front end being dented, right?
You know, that would be kind of my thoughts, but people do what people do. So there are basically four, not areas, but four main issues with the road as it stands. We have, the asphalt is tearing in some locations where it just kind of looks like somebody's pulling it apart. We have heaved asphalt, which where it's lifting up. We have sunken asphalt where it's being pushed down into the subgrade. And we have transitions where you go from the full-depth asphalt or concrete to the partial-depth asphalt or concrete. We get concerns about those on, those are, I guess those are the areas that we get concerns on. This is an area, kind of, you can kind of sort of see the asphalt tearing. I couldn't really get a good picture of it. The solution for this is our public works crew has what they call a mastik machine. And it's a rubberized material that has like a small, very fine aggregate, like a sand and gravel. They use it on cracks all over town and some of our potholes. We've had glowing reviews from the citizens on this use and one of them actually said, "I really like driving on that mastik area as opposed to the regular pavement. Can you use more of it?" So that's the solution for these tears. That is something that can be done basically immediately, as soon as the weather warms up just a little bit and we don't have freezing drizzle. So kind of above the 32-ish degrees sunny days, it's going to have very limited impact to traffic, but there will probably be some. And then we have heaved asphalt. This is primarily present at 44th Street. And this is another repair that we can do pretty much immediately. We do have a very small milling machine. I think it's just a milling head for a bobcat. And we can go in and mill some of this heaved area off. It is not the intent to remove all of it, but just the area where people traverse it for their turning on from Woodlawn onto 44th Street. There was some discussion with Marty. He's like, "I might be able to take that milling head and see if I can rotate it a little bit and smooth off some of those transitions." But I think that's going to be a greater impact to traffic than what we really want. He's not 100% sure on it and I don't want to make things worse. So we're going to kind of push that aside for the time being. We also have sunken asphalt and this is kind of the biggest issue besides those transition areas. This one's a little bit more difficult to deal with because we don't have a solid base below us. So in talking to Marty, his best suggestion would be to wait for spring for the asphalt plants to warm up or to open up so we can get hot mix asphalt and really do a more solid patch. We could put some of our cold patch mix down. It's a bagged mix. But it would just take a ridiculous amount of that cold patch and a lot more staff time to install. The hot mix is going to be a better product with hopefully, knock on wood, a longer lasting impact than the cold patch would. That's more, really more of a temporary solution. And then we've got the transition areas. We've got the transitions, the, when the contractor left the project, they put in like basically one foot by two-inch ramps to help get you from the low to the high. Nothing was done from the southbound pavement to the northbound pavement. And that's another area where we're noticing, where we've got a lot of concerns and people calling and complaining. This, there's really no good solution to this except for the waiting until spring and getting that hot mix asphalt in. Marty's plan is to go ahead and kind of mill out the old ones and put in the new. If we use an asphalt patch or a concrete patch, particularly on the areas against the concrete returns, that's just going to slide back down. There's, it's not going to stick. So that's the report I have. We've got some, some things that we can do now. We've got some things that we can do further into spring when these asphalt plants open back up. The scheduling moratorium with the lawsuit has told us that we can do these things. We just cannot get into the base, the rock base. So any repairs that we are doing is light repairs. Please do not expect a perfectly smooth speed or smooth street. It's kind of something that, you know, at this point with still being under construction, using quotes there, that we just want to be careful of. So we're going to try and make it better for the residents. I do understand their concerns. I do drive that as much as I can up and down when I'm going to lunch and back and forth. But I do understand their concerns. It's very frustrating. It's been a long time. We do share their concerns, but we are trying to do what we can. We have not been able to touch it for a while, but now we can. We've got some plans in place. So if you have any questions, happy to stand for them.
Well, I'm pleased to hear the ideas of getting the tears in the heaved areas fixed fairly soon. This is just going to be another whack-a-mole game.
Exactly.
Like we had on 53rd for a couple of years, but hopefully this is not a couple of years. This is just a, this year and then we're
Correct.
We get it fixed permanently. But I think it's a good plan. I like it. I know that those, those areas that it's actually failing, the pavement is failing, you're never going to fix that till you get in subsurface. So
We really aren't.
That's the way it is. So, okay. Any other comments or questions?
I've got one. On these temporary things, especially the mastik, will those be taken out when we finally get to where we can repair the road? Or will we, we're not going to try and go over them, I hope, is what I'm really trying to say here.
The ultimate redesign of the roadway will more than likely be a reconstruction to what extents we're not sure of. So all of this will go away.
Okay, that's, I just don't want to cover up something and have it show back up in a couple of years.
No, no, everything will, as Ben had mentioned, they're, they're looking at the geotech report on subgrade treatment, including stabilization. So everything that we're doing right now will go away when, once they start reconstructing the road.
Okay.
So
Just the mix of materials concerns.
Yes, no, it's, it's all going to go away. They're not going to be incorporating it, from what I understand. They could be changing their minds or, you know, whatever, further down. We've got the geotech report that's yet to be finished. But yeah, all the material is going to pretty much go away. We're going to have new stuff coming in and it's going to be, if, if anything that is used, that is there now, will be well-mixed and incorporated. The mastik is not something that would detrimentally harm any future material if it's well-mixed and well-pulverized and taken into account. So they do know it's going down there and they'll take that into account during their redesign.
Thanks.
Mr. David.
So asphalt plants open in April, that's the first question.
Ish.
Is your microphone on?
If it worked out, will you be able to take away cones?
No.
Not even the southbound lane?
No, because we're only repairing a little bit. That, we're only repairing the current northbound, which is basically the center lane. We're not spending the extra money that would basically, in my opinion, be wasted to do the, the far east lane.
With that southbound lane, you can drive 80, so couldn't we go up to 40?
You know, that, that's everybody's, I'm sure they had a hefty speeding ticket on that as well, which I personally would not want to pay. But it's very dangerous to go, you know, above the speed limit.
They're going to help pace of the road.
If you pay up for the road with traffic fines, you're, you know, long, long time. Any other questions or concerns?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Dean.
I just want to thank Ann. We all have heard the concerns with citizens and I've always been one to remind myself that this is, people are using this road every day. I certainly don't like the idea of there being safety hazards, especially with 80, we can't fix that 80 mile an hour speed, speed of a, but for pedestrian safety and for car safety, I think this is the right thing to do. Thank you for bringing these repair options up and look forward to seeing them put in place. Thank you.
You're welcome. And for the record, I do not encourage anybody to drive above 30 miles an hour on the roadway.
Yeah.
Seems to be sufficient.
It works fine for me. I do it all the time. So I don't, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for the information. And if nobody else has any questions or concerns, we'll move on to citizens' concerns. Are there any citizens here who wish to speak to the council? I don't see any, but give a chance. Okay. Well, we'll move on to council member reports. Ms. Hamburg, do you have any report?
Thank you, Mayor. I have no report this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Welch.
I have no report.
Mr. Schmidt.
I have no report.
Mr. David.
No report, thank you.
Mr. Dean.
Mr. Mayor, I do. I have a few items, so. So on January 24th, I attended the USD 259 Wichita Public School Foundation Superintendent Breakfast. Kelly spoke about the future of the district and also they touched on the facilities master plan and the upcoming bond. On that note, there are several public open houses this month. I think a few have already occurred to learn more about the upcoming bond on 2/25. Isley will be hosting next Monday on February 10th from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. I'll, I'll plan to be there to help answer questions. Also, you can find more information about the facilities master plan and bond and all the open house dates online at usd259.org/bond2025. And then I wanted to give everybody a reminder, the Bel Air Chamber monthly lunch meeting is the first Wednesdays of every month. So that's tomorrow here in the community room at City Hall. I believe the guest speaker is storm chaser Brandon Ivy. So kind of good timing with spring upon us for weather safety. And then one other item, another reminder for anybody living in the park and village areas of Central Park, they are hosting their annual meeting next Saturday on February 15th from 10:00 to 11:30 here in the community room. That's all I have. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. On the school bond issue, that election is the 25th of February. Today was the last day to register. If you needed to update your registration, it's too late now, unfortunately. But the early voting will start very soon. If you want to do mail-in ballots, you need to make your application, you can do your application now for mail-in ballots. So. Move on to my report. I understand the councilwoman Emily Hamburg had a birthday last month, so belated happy birthday to Council Hamburg. On January 23rd, I attended the CCU A monthly meeting. We approved several steps to put the bond financing activities in work so that we can approve these in February. There's more activity that will be considered later in tonight's agenda on the CCU A issues. On January 29th, I testified before the Kansas House Local Government Committee in opposition to HB 2025, which would remove the three-mile rule of extraterritorial area of influence for cities. It appears from testimony from some of the proponents that of this bill that some cities encounters are not following current law on this and causing a lot of problems for those individuals. And I asked that the committee refer this to an interim committee to study this issue and determine if and what changes are needed. Clearly changing the law because some are not following the current law is insufficient reason on its own. On January 30th, the mayor, Wichita Mayor Lily Wu, held a prayer service for those lost in the tragedy crash in Washington DC on January 29th. I attended this service to represent Bel Air as part of the metropolitan area. I also participated to join our community in prayer for those who died and their families. Governor Kelly has ordered flags to be flown at half-staff in honor of those who died until sundown on February 6th. It's effective yesterday, February 3rd. Sedgwick County Register of Deeds updated their software. This has affected the fraud alerts that property owners can put opt into. If you want to, the register deeds should let you know when documents are filed concerning your property, especially your home, you will need to access the new software and set up these fraud alerts. You need to do this regardless whether you did it in the, on the old software. So the website address is wwwpropertyfraudalert.com/ks sedgwick. And if you need to know what that is later, I can tell you later. So I'll now ask our city attorney for her report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to bring the council's attention to a case that's in front of the Kansas Supreme Court right now. It is a developer named Austin Properties that is suing the city of Shawnee, Kansas. And this is all over zoning. Zoning is difficult. It's a complicated matter. We try to do our best. We We try to give all the information that we need to our planning commissions, to our governing bodies. But this is a perfect example of how complex some of these cases can be. I'll just give a very quick, because I know we have a lot of business on the agenda today. Austin Properties is a multifamily development and they were asking for a rezone with the city of Shawnee. It went in front of the planning commission and then it went in front of the governing body. It started in 2019 and it just was heard by the Kansas Supreme Court on December 10th. So that's an idea of how long some of these cases can take. The Kansas Supreme Court did not tell us when they will make their final decision, but they are considering it. Here are a few of the issues. There's many issues mentioned in this case, but here are some main ones. That the city council acted unreasonably when it failed to approve. So first of all, there was a protest petition, which means in order to approve it, they're going to need three quarters of the council to vote in favor, and that did not occur. According to Austin Properties, they're claiming that the council members did not provide a sufficient explanation on the record for their decision. This is a, a topic that has been discussed at multiple training, multiple conferences. If a governing body were just to say yes, no, make a vote, that that is just not enough. Sharing how they reached that vote, what they're relying on, whether it's a golden factor, whether it's not a golden factor. But Austin Properties and their specific complaint is saying that there was not a sufficient explanation. Austin Properties is also claiming that the council members of the governing body prejudged the proposal. Well, what does that mean? Allegedly, according to Austin Properties, one of the council members assisted a civilian, a resident with the protest petition, which gives the appearance that maybe that council member had made up their mind or had a preference already prior to the discussion. Number three, that the golden factors weighed in favor of approval. This was really interesting because when you listen to the arguments from council for the city and council for the properties on December 10th, the court asked a lot of questions. For example, is it really the court's role to tell governing bodies what is reasonable and what's not? Shouldn't governing bodies be aware of what's reasonable for their community, their zoning regulations and their home rule? They took into fact, just because golden factors may weigh in approval per the Austin Properties may not be the way that it is seen by the governing body. So I, I thought that was a very good comment. Another one was that the city had approved previous similar development plans. And finally, that the city staff member, their staff person recommended approval, but still a governing body went a different direction. The Kansas Supreme Court, there was comments about that, saying that just because a staff person may recommend something does not mean that the governing body is required to follow. Then it went into even more detail about reasonableness. And that is the magic word, what is reasonable? So then the courts went into detail about how the only way to really know if something is reasonable is about the record, the minutes that are taken, that it should include the comments made by count, the governing body. It should talk about which golden factors, golden factors are being discussed. If there are additional factors being discussed, whether or not a governing body member is looking at this factor versus another. That means that the minutes could become longer. If, if the courts are going to be relying on these records, then we're talking about more detail, more paper involved. Everyone's trying to do the best they can. This is something that many city attorneys, whether you're hired by the council or you work in a law firm, we're monitoring, we're looking at because it's providing us guidance on what we need to give to our governing bodies. But that is an active case right now, Austin Properties versus the city of Shawnee. If I get any more updates, I'll let you know, but I just wanted to share that little update that I, to me.
All right, well, thank you very much. I appreciate that information. Mr. Henry.
If this doesn't prove the one-two punch that Maria and I give, I don't know anything. She's detailing case law and I got a bunch of pictures for you tonight. So it just shows you our, our true talents here. As you know, I try to champion what our, our employees do for the city. Also, Mayor and I have been talking a little bit about the hazard mitigation plan, hazard mitigation sheet we have. And part of that is improving stormwater. So I wanted to show you some, some different things that we've been doing throughout the city to improve our stormwater management. This picture up here shows all the areas that Public Works touched over the past year. This is kind of Kruger Trib, we call it, that extends from the rec center kind of over by Oliver. And the second area of concerns, Trib 7, as everybody knows, and that's in that, in the, ends in Quell Ridge, Quell, Quell Lake. And then starts over on, near Woodlawn there. The first area I'm going to show you is our rec complex. We did a lot of rip wrapping and exposing pipes to help with drainage as well as ran some regrading so that we get water out of those, out of the rec center fields. The next area is highlighted as well. And this is really what Marty and the guys have been, did a lot of is re, regrading these ditches to allow water to flow through. So I'll scroll through a few of these and it's quite intense work, as you can tell, it hasn't been done in years. So opening up these channels really improve our whole system as a whole. Again, just a lot of these little types of pictures. I'm trying to get Marty to give me before and afters that make it more, more eventful. But just a lot of good work that Public Works has been doing. And ultimately what we wanted, something that looks like that, where we have a clear channel that's running all the way through our, our city. So this is over by the Heartland Animal Hospital. A little bit before and after, you can see the drastic difference in what, what the guys were doing. Another area that I showcased, some people got some complaints near Elk Creek and 45th. This is what it looked before and then the guys start clearing out. And finally, that's what it looks like after. So just wanted to highlight some of the areas that we've been touching over the past year and will continue to, to create a better system for everyone. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, if there's no questions.
Very good. Well, that's very good information. I'm glad you guys have been, our Public Works people have been doing this. This has always been a big concern on my mind because I remember the floods of 1990, mid 1990s in west part of Wichita that were directors all of lack of maintenance of creeks like these. And we need to maintain these even though we are in a drought. We never know when that's going to change and we're going to have heavy rains and then the system needs to be able to handle those rains. I'm very pleased that you're, we're getting that done. Any questions or concerns from council members? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to ordinance resolutions and final actions. So the first item is a resolution approving the sale of Chisholm Creek Utility Authority Water and Wastewater Facility Revenue Bonds, Series 2025. So this resolution before the council authorizes city and city officials to take certain actions to prepare for the sale of CCU A bonds, including revenue and approval of, review, not revenue, and approval of city information in the preliminary official statement of bonds. Kevin Cowan from Gilmore and Bell will, is available to address any questions.
Good evening. I don't know if you'll have any questions, but I did want to add that one of the things you'll note if you looked at this in terms of detail is that CCU A did select a purchaser of the bonds last week through a competitive RFP process. And it was Robert W. Baird, who is active in this area. I believe they purchased some of the city's bonds in the past. So that's also one of the things the resolution does, approve that purchaser. And then there are a number of steps that are going to take place. The mayor referenced the preliminary official statement, which is the prospectus and all the information about the cities that will be needed to tell investors what they want to know. So again, kind of the first step toward the sale of the bonds and authorizing people to do the things necessary to get that done.
Any questions from Mr. Cowan on this issue?
Yeah, I'm slightly confused on what he just said. Did that mean there's already been a price set on the bonds?
No.
And so then if we've only got one purchaser, how are we going to get a competitive bid?
Well, it, it's, it's an underwriter. So they'll sell to, you know, hundreds of purchasers across the country. But there were, instead of having a, a certain bid on a certain date for the purchase of the bonds, this issues, which is what the city typically does. This issue is fairly complicated, a lot of moving parts, the creditworthiness of two cities. So what has typically occurred is an underwriter is selected through a competitive process. And I didn't bring that information tonight, but there were four or five
Yeah.
proposals. And it looks just like what you see on the, the bids for the city's bonds. What are the interest rates you would propose on this issue? What are the costs? And it led to a true interest cost percentage that was very tight. We talked about it with CCU A. It was down to fractions of percentage points, how tight these proposals were. And so based on that, CCU A chose Baird. Now, they're still going to have to go to the market and set the rates and market may move between, you know, late January when they submitted that proposal and when the bonds are actually sold. So it, it undoubtedly will not be exactly the same. But it is sort of a, each of you put your best foot forward and we'll choose to, to work with one of you. One of the things that I think is implicit in that is whoever's submitting a proposal is reputable. I mean, if they were firms that you didn't know much about and they weren't active in this area, you might wonder, well, maybe they just, you know, wrote whatever rates they thought would get them hired and then they'll go, go put together their deal. And that is not the case. Robert W. Baird is pretty active and, and Raymond James is serving as the municipal advisor on the deal and they'll negotiate and act on behalf of CCU A to make sure that when the bonds do get marketed, it's the deal you should get on that day. So it's, you know, bonds are being offered every day, all day long. These will be rated, so you'll be able to say, well, this was a double A rated bond that priced today for us. Why does it look different than a double A rated bond priced in Missouri? And those are the sorts of discussions that occur just to give you some assurance that it will be competitive on that day. It's just a single negotiated underwriter that will be setting those rates that day.
Okay, so the current rates haven't really moved much, so we should expect them to come in close to what that is. And what was the date again that they're actually going to sell them?
Yeah, well, we may talk about that later, but early, early March, early March.
Early March, okay. So soon.
Yes.
But who knows what could happen between now and then?
Well, you know, it's been an eventful couple of weeks in our country, change of administration, all of those things. And the markets have been pretty stable. That's not to say something couldn't change in that regard.
It's been pretty stable.
The bond market has been pretty stable. But I think, you know, bond markets sort of, you know, long-term view and a lot of things were priced in after the election in November. And so I'm not sure the bond market is seeing anything that's a surprise to it and that's good for stability. But again, no crystal ball. Things could change in the next few weeks.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. David.
Mr. Cowan. So can you, can you clarify, these aren't Bel Air's bonds, these are CCU A's bonds?
Correct.
And can you differentiate, you know, as a member, what is our liability, responsibility? How would it affect our debt rating on these bonds?
It shouldn't impact your general obligation bond debt rating, which is what you see all the time and it's what the city typically issues. So no impact there. And the reason for that is the city only pledges its water system and sewer system revenues to make its payments to Chisholm Creek Utility Authority, who uses those payments to make bond payments. And so there are a couple of layers, you know, rating agencies, bond investors, there's likely going to be a bond insurer. They'll look at all of that information, but they, they'll look at how CCU A is operated. Is it efficient and all of those things? And they have audited financial statements, but they'll really look through CCU A to the two cities and see what do their water and sewer systems look like? Are they in good shape? The, the documents that will be approved and documents have been approved in the past by the cities include a rate covenant that you'll impose rates, fees and charges on your users that will result in enough revenue to cover your obligation to CCU A by 1.25 times. So a little cushion every year. So those are the reasons that the general obligation rating won't be impacted. Different credit, that's your tax base and property tax values and tax collections and growth and all of those sorts of things. This is truly, what do those enterprise funds look like for your water and sewer? How, you know, number of users, how much do you sell? What's your rate structure? The good news is for both cities, you know, you have good coverage the last number of years. And this is information that gets updated and shown to current bond investors all the time. What sort of year did you have? Did you meet all of your rate covenants? And it's, I mentioned 1.25 times and Ted or Barry may know off the top of your head, but yeah, it's like five times for the city of Bel Air. And I want to say 4.75 or something. So many multiples of what you're required to do in terms of financial covenants. And that's, that's good news. That's all good stuff. So, so again, shouldn't impact your general obligation debt issues and the rating in that regard. If it impacts it, it might be in a positive way to show that you have a solid and healthy utility system that can serve your residents and, and allow for growth and those sorts of things. But different pledges to bondholders and bondholders understand they don't have any pledge of the city's, either city's tax revenues. It's all utility revenues.
That's a good explanation.
Mr. Mayor, I had one other clarification, Mr. Cowan. So early in the document, just for anybody in the public that's watching or read this document, there is a, there's two numbers that are different. At the beginning of the bond document, there's 22 million or estimated. Yes. And then later in the document, under section one, it talks about that not to exceed 4.75% through what they call true interest, which I think you referred to earlier. But there's also a bonds dot to exceed 23 million. Can you explain why there's those two different numbers? So the, the 22 million is the actual estimated cost when you factor in, you know, finance costs, construction costs. The second two numbers, those are parameters which will grant city staff, the mayor, the ability to operate and sign some documents as long as those numbers are met. So we, we build in a little cushion, maybe round up to the 23 million in case the engineer's estimate's a little bit off. And then the 4.75, similar, the, the true interest cost, all of them that were proposed, less than that. But that's more of, well, what's an acceptable number? The market may move around a little bit. We hope we do better than that. So that's the reason for the difference between the 22 and the 23. 22 is really the estimate. 23 is, well, if something's a little off, we still want to have the ability to proceed as long as we get that true interest cost that's 4.75 or better. Makes sense. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Cowan? We do have another issue at, that item D to, related to CCU A as well, but this is not, not that matter. If there aren't any other questions or concerns, move on. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. David.
My motion to adopt a resolution approving the sale of Chisholm Creek Utility Authority Water and Wastewater Facilities Revenue Bonds, Series 2025.
Second.
Motion for Mr. David, second for Mr. Welch. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in pairs say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Move on to item B. So the developer, Skyview Block 49, second, phase two, is ready to move forward with the construction of the water storm and paving improvements to support subdivision. Bids were accepted on January 23rd for the project for contractor submitted bids. All bids were slightly over the original petition amount. Therefore revised petitions and resolutions were also on the agenda. The cost of the improvements for these projects will be financed through a bond and spread as special assessments against the benefiting lots. The city engineer, Ann Stevens, is here to address bids and answer questions.
As the mayor said, we had bids that were slightly
As the mayor said, we had bids that were slightly over the engineer's estimate, not too crazy and out of whack. And the developer did choose to move forward with the project. So as the mayor said, you did have the resolutions and petitions in front of you on the consent agenda, so those who had been approved. Preto was the low bid on the project. We have worked with them before on several projects. They always do very good work. We've been pleased with them in the past. And they do have some subcontractors on the project. I believe one would be for the water line installation and one is for the grading. I'm not sure if we have other subcontractors or not coming in, but I'm confident that this project is going to go well, assuming that council chooses to award it to Preto.
Any questions or discussion for Stevens?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. David.
And just looking through the detailed estimates, it looked like where our estimate versus the bids or the real estimates, the contractor estimates were coming in really high was on excavation and site clearing and restoration. Do we have some ideas that we could offer them that would help them with that? Is there any chance of recovering any of that?
No, the, when Garver puts the estimates together, they typically look at what other bids are coming in, in the area. And so it's kind of the best guess. I have not spoken with them specifically on those two items. I know that site clearing is one of those that contractors like to front load because they can get more of their money upfront. And so that's typically an item similar to mobilization where they tend to put in a lot of kind of early initial costs. The, those are costs that are really difficult to estimate because I'm going to refer to it as a game and it kind of is and it kind of isn't. But you know, it's just kind of how they choose to, to put their bid. They, they've got a total dollar amount of what they think this is going to cost and that's where they put some of the money. There's not really, it's a pretty empty site, so I don't know why those numbers are a little bit higher. There's nothing really particularly interesting about this. There's not anything that has come out. We've done phase one, which was just south of phase two. We did Skyview at Block 49, the initial development, which was just west. There was no interesting soils there. There were no, anything out of character for the area. So I really don't know why that they would be different.
Interesting, thanks. So in the consent agenda, we did approve the increase in the amounts from the engineer's estimates to allow for this. Any other questions or concerns? Here none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Hamburg.
I'm going to make a motion to accept the bid from Preto in the total amount of $1,163,493.10 for water and paving and stormwater improvements to serve Skyview at Block 49, second, phase two, and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
Motion by Ms. Hamburg, a second by Mr. Schmidt. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. That motion carries five to zero. Move on to item C, consideration electing a president of the council. So each year, the city council selects a council member to serve as council president. The council president presides over meetings and represents the governing body when the mayor is not available. And we have typically been doing this in December, but in reading our ordinance, it says we do it in February. So I am asking our city staff to please change that ordinance to move it to December because we have the election in November. We seat new members to the council in December, so it seems most appropriate that we do this in December. But right now, that's what the ordinance says, we're going to follow the ordinance. Okay, so.
Are you willing to continue, Greg?
I, I would be. It wasn't as hard as what I thought it was, but I think it should be somebody that's definitely going to be here in February and I still have to face reelection in November. So I would think that would minimize who we should choose.
Several people have to face reelection in November.
But two don't.
So you're suggesting one of those two.
Mr. Mayor.
Do you have an nomination? Mr. Dean.
I motion to elect Emily Hamburg as president of the council.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mr. Dean and a second by Mr. David. Would Ms. Hamburg accept that selection?
I'd, I'd be happy to serve.
Thank you, okay. So any questions or discussion about Ms. Hamburg serving as president?
I have none. I was just slightly concerned she wouldn't want to do it because of some of the other stuff she's doing.
Thankfully, mayor has a pretty good attendance rate, so it's not too heavy of a job.
Some days are better than others, so, okay. Well, we have a motion on the floor for, by Mr. Dean and a second by Mr. David. All in favor say aye.
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 Close, same sign. That motion carries five to zero. Congratulations, council president. And now we'll move on to item D. So this is a late added item. Last week, Wilson and Company, the engineering firm that designed a wastewater treatment and expansion, held a bidders conference and some of the bidders said that they needed an additional week to prepare their bid, where they made no bid this project. But we are very tight on timeline. The current sixth supplement agreement says the construction contract needs to be signed by March 1. Park City Administrator says he believes Park City Council will approve their version of this sixth supplement agreement that is in the packet. And Wilson and Company, the bond counsel and financial advisor, have all signed off on this change. So CCUA financial advisor has proposed a modification of the timeline, which gets the final approval of everything on March 27th. But once Park City approves their version of, on February 11th, a special meeting of CCUA board will be called for February 12th to finalize approval of both documents. So that's the rundown of what this is about. And this is all came together in the last few days, so it's, it's been moving fast and furious.
Are we going to get those, I'm trying, are we going to get those amounts early enough to, that we could adjust the bond?
Yes, we will. The schedule, and I have it now, the revised schedule shows that we will have this update, the bid opening for a construction contractor proposals is February 25th. So that is not enough time to negotiate a deal and sign contracts by the end of the month, which is the current requirement. So this is to modify the requirement. So then we would have the bid opening on February 25th. We have our regular board meeting on February 27th to review the construction bids and determine amount of finance of the bonds. And then a special board meeting of the CCUA would be held on March 6th to adopt the bond resolution, which would finalize those bond amounts. So that's the revised schedule and I know that has not been published with anybody. That was just made this afternoon sometime, so really not, it's like I said, it's been a fast-moving target, so, but that's, that's where we are.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we weren't still guessing on the amount we needed in funds.
We should know certainly what the amounts are by the time we get to there. That's what I know.
I, I will motion to approve the amendment to sixth supplemental water supply and wastewater service agreement made and entered into as of February 11, 2025, by and between the Chisholm Creek Utility Authority and the city of Bel Air, Kansas, and authorize the mayor to sign.
I would ask you to modify that motion, authorize the mayor and the council president to sign, if you would, please. It doesn't say that in the written text.
Do we need both or you're not going to be able to sign?
I, I would like these kind of documents to be signed by both because they, I, as the chair of the CCUA, want to make sure that we have well documented, that I'm not the only person involved in this deal. It looks a little funny when you look, look at something that's 10 years old and it says, wow, he approved that for both the city and the CCUA? It just, this just makes it a better, a better document.
Right. Oh, Emily's.
She'll be signing both times too. Yes, I get that.
That's what I was just trying to, how that was going to be an issue because she's also on the CCUA board.
Yes, she will be signing in both places as well. That is true. Because she's the vice chair of the CCUA.
Yes. So it still looks, it still gives the same, same look. I understand where you were going. If Greg was still the president, even he's on the board, so.
Yeah.
Say John Milch.
There you go.
I don't have any real authority, though, other than being a council member. What does our city attorney think?
Regarding whether it's lawful to add council president?
Whether we need to, whether it would give the, whether we're avoiding in any appearance of improprietary, yeah, that's not the word, right word, but.
I, I can tell you that the original sixth supplement that was discussed by the CCUA last year had the, had the exact same format as what Mayor Benage is describing, so it would be consistent.
So it had the council president. Okay, then I will amend my motion to include the council president to sign.
Thank you.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mr. Welch, a second by Mr. David. Any additional questions or discussions? Here none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
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 Close, same sign. That motion carries five to zero. Next item is executive session, but I would ask for a five-minute recess before we do that because we need about a 30-second, a 30-minute executive session. Okay, so motion for a recess and then we'll motion for executive session.
I move we recess for five minutes.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Dean and a second by Mr. David. All in favor say aye.
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 Close, same sign. Recess for five minutes. Okay, I'm going to call the meeting back to order and entertain a motion for a 30-minute executive session. Mr. David.
I'll make a motion to recess in the executive session, discuss with legal counsel and receive legal advice related to pending litigation. Discussion will be pursuant to KSA 75-4319B2, for legal consultation with Catherine Klumsky, which would be dean privilege in the attorney-client relationship. Invite the city manager, city engineer, city attorney, Neil Gosh, Ben Mayberry, Jason Fundis and Bob Henthorn. Meeting will be for a period of 30 minutes and the open meeting will resume in city council chambers at 8:35.
Second.
Second. Motion by Mr. David, a second by Mr. Welch. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. 8:35, we hold executive session in the background as always. executive session in the background as always.
Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting back to order. We held executive session and no binding actions were taken. Ready to move on to next issues, future issues and discussions. So I think staff would like to discuss a couple of items tonight. Barry Smith, our finance director will address payment processing with their new system. And Maria Shrock, our city attorney will review proposed illegal camping ordinance. So, Mr. Barry Smith.
Good evening, my name is Council. Just a quick little conversation tonight regarding the processing fees. As you know, back in November and December, when we were creating the end up being the fee schedule, we went ahead and added on the 2% fee for all payment card transactions. That started January 1st of 2025. Well, since that started, we had a some change in Kansas legislation and Kent statute. And one statute in particular regarding credit card surcharge fees, which were now allowable to all retailers and merchants across the state. Well, the timing of that legislation and our fee schedule kind of created some confusion when we got some concerns from residents regarding debit cards being charged as surcharge. And when it comes to the processing fees. After having some conversations with Tyler Tech, our processing company. They kind of explained it how whenever they run a debit card on online system and all that, it's ran through the credit card network. So secondly, a credit card charge. We didn't really kind of like how transparent that was. So we went ahead and turned off the fees for a minute until we could dive in a little deeper and get that back. But after doing some more research into it and looking at the Visa, Mastercard, Discover, brand fees, rules and regulations, you know, for everybody like that. It really matters on that language of what type of fee it is, whether it's a surcharge, service fee or convenience fee, things like that. So we weren't charging a surcharge to credit or debit cards. We are more in the service fee, convenience fee categories, depending on who you look at, whether it's Visa or Mastercard, their terms are kind of interchangeable. But we did learn some other things as well that it doesn't, if we do charge like a convenience fee, if that's what we're going to label it. It doesn't have to be applied across all payment channels. So we can neither turn it off for like in-person payments. If you're using a card in person and only charge online IVR over the phone. Or like text to pay to make it a true bona fide convenience fee, since it's using a non-standard payment method. So kind of want to get your feedback on that. And then just also put in here a reminder about the other option we have is to just continue absorbing that fee. I believe you started absorbing it back during COVID, but our percentage about got cut in half when we switched that new Tyler processing system. There's still a pretty significant amount of money at the end of the year. So just wanted to put those options out there if we do want to continue. Passing on that processing fee that we're charged by Tyler Tech and the processors. We'd probably come back with the fee schedule, just have that language cleared up a little bit more. So it's more clear and have it labeled convenience fee.
So if I remember right, we spent $126,000 in these fees last year.
It's about 160,000, yeah.
160,000, okay. So even more than I was thinking. And I'm a little confused as to the options that you're offering. Is it, is there an option where we can go back to just the one fee for everything? It sounds like that's not the case because law doesn't allow that, but I don't, I'm a little confused. So help me, I understand this.
So it's, it is very confusing when it comes to all these items. We can charge that convenience fee across all payment channels and payment types. When I say payment channels, that's where you're making the payment. In person, online, over the phone, or through text messages. The payment types would be cash, check, money order, credit card, debit card. So if we're going to stick with that terminology of convenience fee, that's more of offering some type of service as a convenience to make your payment. Any non-standard payment that we haven't offered in the past kind of thing. So it's better to just charge that convenience fee on those non-standard types. But we can charge it across all payment channels if we want to.
Let me see if I understand that. I see you're saying if we said, okay, if you're paying cash or ACH, you, you could be exempt from that fee. And if you pay other methods, you could have to pay that fee. Is that an option?
Yeah.
And that's a legal option, even if it's debit credit, whatever.
Yep. Debit credit cards, all that applies. Currently, we do not charge any fees on cash, check, money order, or bank draft ACH payments. We've always kept those fee free because they're free for us.
So are those fees a fixed amount or a percentage of the transaction?
After we met with Tyler Tech yesterday, we learned it could be either, it can be a fixed amount or it can be the percentage that we were currently doing.
We get charged a percentage. Recover something.
Yeah.
It's a percentage of the bill, right?
Yeah, that's what we pass along. Yeah. Currently, we have the 2.5%.
It's a hundred dollar bill, you charge two, two dollars fifty cents, right?
I, I think the major is terminology is so big in this world and everybody uses different terminology. So the, the term convenience fee is what we would need to change in our, in our fee schedule to, to do, to run this.
So the goal originally, from what I remember and some council members correct me if I have this wrong, but the goal I understood is that. We wanted to make sure that if we're going to get charged from a service provider for visit, credit card or debit card, we wanted to get a fee. We wanted to charge those customers a fee for using that, that method of payment. We don't get charged those, the banks don't charge us for ACH transactions. They don't, we don't get charged for check. We don't get charged for cash. There's no, there's no charge for any of those kinds of things backed us from the bank or anybody else. So we don't need to charge a fee to our, our customers for those, right? And that's I understand what we originally wanted to do. So to get back to that is matter of changing terminology?
Yeah, just simple as that.
I say just change terminology.
I agree. Mr. Mayor, there was, there was one other item to that. This was when we brought the new system online. We were to alleviate a lot of work for city staff. And so that's why we are also driving people towards, I think, the ACH, right? Because the cash and the, the in-person is going to cost us a lot of time.
Right.
And so, so that's, that's something we also need to somehow incentivize.
Yeah. And even on that first month, since we turned it on, we had over 40 new enrollees in the ACH bank draft plan, which is great.
Yeah.
That's the least time consuming, most effective payment method we have.
Yeah, no, I agree with everything that's been said. The reasoning, you laid it out really well. I, I think we were just trying to recover our costs. So the city at large, the general budget isn't covering $160,000. And I think I'd like to do that if it just takes change in the term.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I wanted to ask one question. So, but it was an average before, right? We, we don't take American Express because that's a higher merchant fee. Is that right? And so now when you can be precise, will Visa and Ma, I mean, is, is there a reason why we should take American Express and just charge those users? The actual percentage? Or is it just not worth it?
It, it's going to have to be that flat percentage that we charge. And the American Express ones are so much higher and they have so much more cash back option, options. And another downside to American Express is when you're processing their payments, they make their own separate transactions and deposits and withdrawals into your account. And it's a nightmare.
So, so it's still going to be an average. It's going to be the same whether you have Discover or Visa. They're so close. We're going to do the same fee.
Yeah, they have to be the same fee across.
It has to be, okay.
Yeah, that can be no favor.
And that's probably where the, the world isn't at right now, but it's impossible to like run your card and try to, and the system finds out exactly how much it, you know, you have to do the averages. And we were talking with Tyler on Monday and there, it's kind of one of the advantage of going with the bigger company that we did is they have more pull and power to recode. And so they're really looking into how they can, they make a better process for everyone. All we want to do is recover. All we can do is recover what we're actually charged, not making any profit. And we're very clear on that. We're not, you know, we're, all we're doing is just recovering that fee.
As an on cost.
Exactly.
That's what I wanted to say too, because I think there's this perception that we were trying to stick it to people, but it's really, it's a fairness thing. I mean, I like, you know, the city at large to subsidize my hotel points on my credit card, but it's better policy to have enough money to upgrade a park every year. So.
Can we put something on the signup page that big flashing light says, if you do this, we're going to charge you 2.5%? And it'd be a whole lot better off for you if you did ACH and try to steer them that way.
So that's part of those rules from the card brand companies is the notification requirements. It's on the homepage. It's on the utility homepage. It's on the website. It's on our fee schedule. Everything we can do to notify whoever's using that payment type. And we also put on there, these are also our free payments, cash, check, ACH. Please sign up. It's in every spot, everywhere a customer would come in, front desk, everything.
I'd just like to emphasize the free ones.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a comment, please?
Certainly.
Just to be very clear for everyone is that there is a current statute. And that statute states that of course, a city may establish a fee for a credit card. But not add an additional fee upon a debit card. They are different. It is just the way it is. Whether you call it a convenience fee, a transaction fee, a surcharge fee. Per statute, there is not to be an additional fee added to a debit card. That is coming from federal law. Now, there are many other cities that are using convenience fees, transaction fees and such. They're using processing companies and processing companies are either able to distinguish or not able to distinguish. I, I don't know if this is some type of current industry standard among processing companies. But I just want to make it clear that if, if you move forward and make a decision, which the governing body is of course allowed to. Please know that the statute and federal law has that language within it.
So you're saying we cannot charge a fee if they use a debit card. We can only charge a fee if they use a credit card.
Per statute, it makes it very clear that the city may set a fee to be added to each credit card transaction. Equal to the charge paid by the city for the use of the person using that credit card. It does not list debit because it is purposefully not mentioning that card. And then by federal law, it's not allowed. Now, I know that sounds confusing because there are others that are doing it.
Barry, can we just turn off accepting debit cards? Is there any way in the system to do that? Where they cannot use a debit card because a PIN is required and we won't accept a PIN? Is there any way to do that?
So because of how Tyler's process, their software works, it can't distinguish. That's why it runs everything as a credit card on, on their side.
But the fact that they're not distinguishing between a debit and credit card doesn't make the difference. In material, there is a difference. One goes to a bank account and the other one goes to a credit account. Right? So what she's saying, we cannot charge debit cards.
That's where you get into a problem though, that when you process a debit card like a credit card, it doesn't work quite the same as using a debit card like a debit card.
And, and that's the gray area.
So, so what? If the law says you can't charge for a debit card, you can't charge for it. Doesn't matter how the, the processing works, you can't do it.
It matters to what you can tell is happening.
Right. I think most people know when they use their debit cards, they're going to have to use a PIN because I hate doing it because I have to freaking remember my PIN. So I, I, I agree with John Welch. There is a difference for the, for the user too. You know, if it's run, ran as a credit or if it ran as a PIN, as a PIN with the debit function. But it doesn't sound like the law, the way it's written, has any, any sort of definition of that at all.
Yeah, but then it gets back to our problem. We can't tell if you sign up with a debit card as a credit card. And, and so it's, it's really both types of instrument. It, it's being used as a credit card in one place and a debit card someplace else. And so I don't know if we, if we can go ahead and take it because it's being used as a credit card, even though it is a debit card. Because it, it totally depends on how you use it. I mean, you can take a debit card to Dylan's.
And this is the, this is the question that a lot of cities are saying, yes, convenience fee, taking that approach. The other one can absorb all the fees. So that, that's kind of where we're at in this process is which side are you falling on?
Well, that's, that's why I want to try and push people towards ACH because I, I'd like to get rid of these fees.
But the convenience fee, Maria is saying we can't do it on a debit card, even if it's run as a credit card because of how the law is written. How, the convenience fee would be if everything run as a credit card, right? Because you can't distinguish the debit card run as a credit card.
Correct.
So the law must let you do it if you can't distinguish. Is that correct? No? Then how are they even able to do it?
There's no case law on this issue that I know of. Maria might have found some, but that, that's where we're getting the two sides from the equation.
There's been some cases involving credit companies such as, I don't want to misname them, but I'm talking credit cards along the level of Mastercard, those type of big ones. But I'm not saying they were the ones involved. There have been cases of that level involving customers where a debit card was used and a charge was added. And there was some type of a settlement, but nothing against a municipality in Kansas.
Can you make a rule where we don't accept debit cards?
You're saying if we take credit card online, they could enter a debit card number and we wouldn't know.
If we said we don't accept debit cards and they do that, then, then they're taking that responsibility because we're saying we don't accept them.
Agree. I think, I think that's the way to do it is you state debit cards are not accepted. If they do it and the system takes it, then they're accepting that. And we have basically written, and it's written that we don't accept debit cards. And if they run it through, we're going to charge them a fee. That should get around that issue. Because then they are not following what's prescribed. And we also should ask for an enhancement to the software to differentiate so we can deal with this thing more appropriately, I would think.
Sounds like they're working on that.
Tyler Tech said they were working on that to be able to create that.
That's what I would think we just do is just say, unfortunately, at this point in time, we can't accept debit cards. And if you do use it, you know, it'll, it'll run, it's going to run it through as if it was a credit card transaction. Say something like that and I think we're covered. Because then they're accepting that.
We can, I'll get with Maria and we can definitely look at the.
Okay.
This, for some reason, ever since this, the statute, one of the statutes was updated as of January 1 of 2025. The office.
State statute or federal?
State statute. It was a state statute that allows merchants to add a surcharge upon credit card transactions. So the Office of the District Attorney put out a press release saying to Cedric County citizens, a statute has been updated. As a result, you might see an additional charge on your receipt. Because merchants are now allowed by Kansas Legislature to add that surcharge as long as they make conspicuous notice to you, the customer. But remember, if you're using a debit card, you are still not going to receive charges upon that per federal law. That was the press release that was put out. And that is what a civilian brought to our city building, that press release saying, what about my debit card that I used? I shouldn't be having a fee placed upon this. So when looking into it with further, looking at the statute, other city attorneys talking to one another, asking, well, how do you read this? What's your interpretation? When you go back to the statute for cities, acceptance by a city of a debit card or a credit card for payment, it says you could do so. But it states that the city may establish a fee upon each credit card transaction. But it does not talk about a debit card transaction. So I'm glad to research further, but other municipalities are using processing companies. Those processing companies are not distinguishing. They're, I can't speak for them, but it appears to be some type of a standard.
So are the debit cards issued by Visa and American Express and Mastercard or are they issued by the bank? Because I know when you go on websites, e web pages, you type in those first four numbers and it can tell you what kind of card it is. Whether it's a Mastercard or a Visa or.
Yeah, there's a code.
Yep.
Majority are, are Visa, Mastercard. There are two companies, Star, some of the older earlier, Dr. Star.
Star and, Star and Pulse are the networks that they're ran through. But Visa, Mastercard and Discover are the main three card brands out there. And yeah, most every debit card and credit card either has a Visa, Mastercard or, you know, Discover, American Express logo on it.
So you're still saying that a debit card could have a Mastercard code on the beginning?
And, and you wouldn't necessarily know.
Right. Yeah, my debit card's a Visa. I mean.
Only the consumer would know who owns, who, who holds the card.
So technically though, on our end, if we were to do what's been suggested, say, we only accept credit cards. If a person's using a debit card, it is, is technically being registered in our system through Tyler as a credit card transaction. On their end.
That was explained to us.
Correct. Okay, I, I think the appropriate disclaimer on, on all the notices that if you, we don't accept debit cards. But if you use a debit card and it's accepted as a credit card, that is the consumer's responsibility.
Where that terminology comes in, it's so critical because even on all of Visa, Mastercard, Discover, card brand rules, like straight from their, their documents. It says service fees, convenience fees, et cetera, can be ran on credit or debit cards. It can be a flat fee or a percentage on any range of payment types or channels, in person, online.
But that's software versus law.
That's the card brand rules.
If, if Mastercard issues in the card and Mastercard says that you can be charged a fee on this and you've agreed to this. Then we should be able to charge on a Mastercard the fee. And then if we have three cards, I don't know, Visa, Mastercard and Discover that all have those rules, then we ought to only accept those cards.
I don't think it matters what those rules are. If the law says you can't do it, you can't do it.
And that's our statute.
Well, that's not true. If you've signed a merchant agreement with somebody, then that can supersede the law.
Can it?
I don't think so.
I could look into that further. Th- this has been a real learning opportunity. But I'm, I'm really proud of everyone. We're all trying to learn about what we're able to do, wanting to move forward cautiously, talking to our neighbors, gathering more information, learning about the processing. So I can get that information for you.
I mean, it does sound like there's an industry best practice that's been occurring and it's going to probably change or tweak based on these laws that are being passed that are very, very recent. So I think the best way for us to handle it is probably to adjust with what's changing. But I like the idea of sort of saying we don't accept debit cards and there being a disclaimer that if you use it, it'll be charged as a credit card.
So Maria, right now, I mean, I don't like that we're absorbing these fees. So if we put the charge on there with this sort of disclaimer, you think that's playing a little fast and loose and you need to do more research? What, what's your suggestion?
I mean, I, every, every governing body ma, is making this decision. Other, other cities, I believe, are looking at processing companies. You could of course, look at what, what type of risk is being assessed or opposed with a decision. I'm, I'm glad to look further and get it, get some more information for staff.
It is pretty confusing because the statute that was in question that changed on January 1st, I think that was in chapter 16, that doesn't relate to municipalities. Ours is in chapter 12. It's been in effect for several, several years in terms of recouping those fees from utility costs and charges and payment processing. Now that one does only assess, it, the title of it says, taking payment processing using credit or debit cards. But in the body of the statute, it only mentions credit cards on there. So it kind of does or it doesn't say it can be attributed to debit cards. But what also is confusing is in the state sections of the statutes where it identifies state agencies, et cetera. State agencies, educational institutions, school boards can process any kind of credit and debit card payments. And they're allowed to recoup any costs incurred as a result of the method of the payee.
But that's before the new law came out. So that's not really valid anymore.
Right. But that new law, that's only for like retail merchants. That's not.
There's a grandpa clause on that either.
The other ones were in effect before that. So I just thought it was funny how state agencies.
So federal law, when was, when was the federal law coming, coming into play?
The one that, the one that state just put out the press release that recently was on commercial merchants.
But it was state law. And I want to know when the federal law came into play. Because there, I mean, I'm not a lawyer here, but there's a rule there that federal law trump state law. And there's also a rule that you can't contract to violate the law. Okay? So, so John said, well, you can make an exception. Maybe you can do that, but it depends on how the law is written, whether you can do that. Because you can't contract to violate the law.
Yeah, I think we want to do the due diligence to comply as much as we can. And I think the disclaimer and then get them to fix the software is the, is the most effective plan at this point. We're probably going to be ahead of others that are trying to deal with it. And they're probably charging them. They shouldn't be.
Well, and what I see happening, if we don't do this right, we're going to get tangled, tangled up in a class action suit. Somebody's going to say, oh, hmm. And guess what?
Well, that's my problem with putting a disclaimer that if you use a debit card, we're going to treat it like credits because somebody will come in there and do it on purpose.
Well, you got to say that it is, you got to be very clear on the wording. And that's all a matter of the wording. It's not, we're going to treat it like a credit is. We cannot distinguish that as a debit card. We only accept credit cards. And if you do this as a debit card, we have no way of knowing that. That is solely your doing and you're taking total responsibility.
We don't accept, we don't say.
But you got to be.
I understand your argument, but I could willfully come in and break your system and say, you took my debit card and now I want to sue you because you took it.
Yeah.
I know you told me I couldn't do it, but it accepted it. It accepted it.
I get what you're saying, but I think you're on the ice. But again, that's the lawyer's thing.
Barry.
Trespassing and you trespass.
That's enough for, to go to court with.
Barrier ten.
I get it.
When you guys talk with Tyler, how fast do you see the, the programming fix happening? Like, is this going to take a couple of months, a year? Like, do you have any feel for that? I mean, I assume all their customers are screaming at them about that issue.
Yeah.
If, if they're having the same discussion.
I know they're beyond the conceptual phase of it. I think is what he was alluding to during our call and that they're really working towards getting a fix for it and getting implemented. There just wasn't a concrete timeframe on when that would occur.
Are you not able to find that answer, Maria? Okay.
It's actually already there for me regarding the Office of the District Attorney's press release from January 13th of this year. Although debit cards are not mentioned in the body of the new statute. That adding that fee would remain illegal in all 50 states under federal law. Specifically, the Durbin Amendment to the Don Frank Reform and Consumer Protections Act.
Pretty old act.
Twenty.
Yeah, 2010. Yeah, yeah. So it's been in effect for, for 25 years or 15 years. Yeah.
Right to our congressman.
Yeah.
That, I mean, also the confusing part of that is, is that amendment there and everything is in reference specifically to surcharging. Which you have to be registered for and signed up for with Visa, Mastercard and all those programs.
That's where the terminology is. So we could spin our heads with all the terminology. However, I think, I'm at the. Your choice with just absorbing the fee and waiting till Tyler or walking this gray area is kind of the. Until Tyler can update or another position presents itself.
So that's where you say other communities are using the convenience fee to sort of loop around it a little bit. Or they think they are.
Ninety percent. Yeah.
But the convenience fee issue can, in my missing, hearing this, does the federal law prohibit you from using a convenience fee against debit cards?
Barry, if you want to recap our Tyler, I mean, Tyler had no, or.
That's kind of the gray area too, because it's called, just like they said, it all comes down to that terminology. The federal law, state law specifically references surcharges, which recoups 100% of all processing costs. Convenience fees are not applied to every channel. You're not recouping 100%. So that's the difference. You're only applying them to a bona fide convenience method of payment while offering. while offering other payment options that are free. So this like the choices are already being made if they're going to you pay online to accept the fee and move forward, even though there's other options that don't charge a fee available. That's kind of the argument.
I know we accepted the credit cards because we were trying to be get everybody to start doing that instead of coming into the office. Why don't we just be radical here and tell them we're not taking credit cards anymore?
Or debit cards?
No, no, no charge cards. You can either have an ACH or you can come write us a check. How how many people do we think that would affect and how bad would that be for?
Do you think we'd get more people to sign up for ACH?
Well, over three thousand.
Well, that's what I'm pushing towards. Because we need to push ACH.
It would be an extreme hurdle in the majority of our processes. If you think about shut off day, if you think about when the bills are due, when you think all those types of issues would come into play, calling up the city. Uh, I I just, I don't know what the, it's usually about a third, third, third. So a rule of thumb, a third on ACH, a third pay in check and a third pay credit card slash debit card slash charge. So thou- you know, a little over a thousand each, so you'd be inconveniencing over a thousand households or accounts. And you'd be steering them away from using the new ERP a little bit, right? Because the ACH coming, it's more manual to set up.
Usage management tool, other than that.
Well, I'll talk from my experience. I would only sign up for the online if I could use my credit card because I get cash back. Okay.
It's perk of the cash back.
So encourage them to get those cash back credit cards and it will be golden, right?
I don't like to see un- unknown amounts on my credit card. I I like to see the bill before I pay it.
So Maria, in terms of shifting risk and liability, do we have any coverage? If Tyler Technologies recommends this or they say that's how their system works? If we wanted to play a little in the gray area?
That's a really good question, Councilmember. Uh, when I, when I go back to the statute, which of course is where we all start, it's it's actually very detailed because it said, it says if the city imposes a fee for payments made by credit card, see how it distinguishes that? If the city imposes a fee for payments made by a credit card, the city shall provide notice of such fee to the person making payment by credit card. It continues to use those words. Have we talked to the provider about the specific statute statute? Have they looked at the specific statute? I don't know. I think the provider's just trying to be as helpful as they can with what other clients are doing, what they're seeing across the state and or country.
Yeah, I mean, they're processing cards across the country, so um it's very hard to get really specific based on just different jurisdictions and all the rules like that, but generally speaking, I believe.
But but there's no difference jurisdiction if it's a national law that you can't charge a fee for debit cards. That's across the board, all fifty states.
That's what they said too, but that's their terminology was that has to be a charge, a surcharge in that case.
Only surcharge does that apply to?
You can only not charge a surcharge to a debit card moving forward.
You can charge a convenience fee.
A convenience fee or a service fee. That's what.
You can't do that.
It's told to us. Correct.
Okay. Do you agree with that interpretation from when you're reading for your research, Maria?
I I did not visit with them about this this discussion. Uh, so I if I could reach out and talk to their lawyer, uh, figure out what they're looking at, but um I was not, I was not part of that discussion.
But you don't, you, from your research, would you agree with that conclusion? Or you just don't know? Yeah.
Sounds like she's leaning away from it, but she's willing to be convinced.
I I apologize. I don't know, but I'm glad. I'm glad to go and talk to someone.
I think we need to know. The city attorney, contact Tyler and see if they can provide evidence of why we could charge a convenience fee.
Right. I think that's fine.
Just one more thing from it. Barry said this new law, this new state statute law is not relevant to us because we're a municipality. Okay, okay.
Okay, so we we just need to make sure and and ask Maria to please go and work with Tyler and make sure that we're on solid footing as to wish what direction we are. And if if you could charge the the fee, convenience fee for debit cards, and it's 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 legal both on the federal and the state level, then let's do that. If you can't, let's let's put the disclaimer out that if you put it in there and you don't just, and we don't know that it's a debit card, you're going to get charged like a credit card and we just don't know.
Okay.
Thank you much.
Thank you. All right, the next is illegal camping. I think you had some things you wanted to talk about in there, Maria.
Sure, just three quick things, please. When it comes to uh the illegal camping, we had a workshop not too long ago. One of the proposed ordinances involved uh prohibiting people from walking into a road and making contact with a car, whether the car was stopped or trying to get the car to stop. Uh, one of the questions posed to me was, don't we already have an ordinance? Or don't we already have something with the standard traffic ordinance about impeding the flow of traffic? And I want to make it very, I I wanted to share, we do not. So since we do not have an ordinance that states an individual cannot impede or interfere with the flow of traffic, we could definitely, uh, I can propose this at the next council meeting for council to consider. But that was one of the questions. Why? Why would we look at this if we already have something on the books and we don't? Uh, this would, if we did add this, it would go into the um into our other ordinances, similar to like where we have online with the fireworks and such. The second thing I I wanted to let counsel know is when we talked about this new illegal camping ordinance, we came across a section where recreational vehicle was mentioned, recreational vehicle campground was um suggested, and that currently in the Bel Air Code, there was, there was not a lot of talk about those types of things in existence. When I went back and looked in the code, it turns out we do have a definition for recreational vehicle, and we also have a definition for recreational vehicle campground. So what I was going to do was change these words in the ordinance to match the definitions that we have currently. Uh, that would be a change in the ordinance that you saw at the workshop, but at least it would be consistent with what we have in our code. Okay.
Yeah, we should do that.
Uh, then the other question was regarding camping permits. This proposed ordinance talks about uh an individual with a temporary camping permit would not, they would be excluded from this ordinance. And when I go back to our code, looking at camping permits, we don't have a temporary camping permit, but we have a special use permit. And I didn't know if council would like to have as a paragraph in that proposed ordinance that talks about temporary camping permits specifically. Other jurisdictions have such as Wichita, and when they use that provision regarding temporary camping permits, they talk about what it is, who may issue it, how long it lasts. But I didn't know if governing body was interested in having such a provision added or not.
Just a question about special use permits. Uh, when do we use those today?
I'm not aware of of that information. I can get that from the, from our data. I can gather that data and talk to.
Special use in terms of what?
Whatever you're saying, you're referencing that our ordinances allow for a special use permit.
I know conditional use is usually a zoning thing.
That's what, that's what.
I was going to say, you guys were talking. Okay.
Well, I, that's what I'm wondering. Okay, it's only in the zoning section?
It appears it would be with the zoning administrator reviewing it and making a decision, maybe asking additional questions for approval or denial.
Well, to keep things simple, I would like to see, and you'd have to do a little problem, some more research on this, make sure this makes sense. If I'd like to see is just be a special use permit, not create yet another permit and a whole series of verbiage on a different type of permit that nobody knows anything about. So so we just have a consistent special use permit, and it could be for this issue or this issue or this issue. I mean, if that, because it's not used very often, apparently, from what I'm gathering.
Probably one of those things nobody knows about.
Right, yes, maybe. So I'm just curious.
It's a, what what type of special use are we talking camping? So if someone wants to be camping?
Camping, you'd, that would fall under a special use permit.
Special use permit usually goes before the planning commission, if I'm not mistaking. The last one I've heard, it was kind of a big deal, so it's kind of a, we're um sometimes especially use permits used for um businesses and whatnot. So we had that case that was a special use permit. The paintless dent repair issue, I believe, that was part of a special use permit.
So that is, that is a different issue.
Condit- oh, that was conditional use. I'm sorry. I brought up that 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 conditional use is a zoning term. I wasn't sure if people were mixing up. I'm sorry, I was mixing that up. I was like, wait a minute, I don't know if we want to use a conditional use permit on this.
If it makes sense, I think especially use permit makes, sounds like it might make sense, but I I think you need to do a little more homework on that to make sure that that makes sense. I'm a little concerned on this impeding traffic issue. If you put that in this ordinance, then it sounds like this or impeding traffic only applies to trying to solicit money from people. There could be a legitimate reason to flag somebody down because of, somebody's hurt here, we need help. Okay, and that's impeding traffic too, but I don't want that person to be be in violation of the law and somebody go after them because they they did something like that. Um, and I'm, so I'm a little concerned that um we we'd be careful what we, what we're saying here, okay? Because there are occasions when that's appropriate. Not very many, but it happens.
I should have been more clear. The impeding flow traffic would be separate from the illegal camping. So one would be traffic and the other one would be more public safety admirals.
Okay, so they'd be in different sections of the code.
Correct. I apologize for that.
No, that's fine. I just want to make sure that it was a different section of the code and so somebody doesn't come back and say, well, that only applies to illegal camping.
Even so, Maria, just to clarify, I assume, because this is going to be in a traffic section, that there could be exceptions, like in the case of an emergency, like you can list out that in this ordinance, I assume, that could kind of clarify.
Correct, because this ordinance would give examples of what an individual is not to do. For example, stop a vehicle or attempt to get them to stop in order for there to be an exchange between the two, whether that be monetary or some other type of good versus.
Soliciting funds.
Versus maybe someone in a car accident or someone tried to provide assistance.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Yeah, you couldn't just say for solicitation. Might correct.
Well, Wichita did something there because they used to, they used to have a, you know, the fire people would always go out collect money on Memorial Day weekend and in the streets, and they don't do that anymore there. They they go to the stores. Yeah. Collect money that way.
Will you quickly refresh on the issue with the protesting a few years ago and how this ordinance, like when people are protesting in the street, what was the the decision that came down?
Walking the highways.
Where people, at twenty first North Kansas, I believe, is where the issue took place. You gave us an update not too long ago. This would be, I'm assuming, totally separate from that, but where does like protesting and impeding traffic come into play?
Just a thought off the top of my head, and I don't know what we say in our ordinance, but protesting should be, if you want to use a street for protesting, just like if you want to use the street for parade, you need to have a permit for that purpose. Uh, otherwise protesting can be done in right of way without any any permit, and we would restrict that because that's a, that's a First Amendment right, freedom of speech. But if you want to do something outside of the right of way, that is intended for pedestrians, I would say you need a permit for that. I mean, that's just my thought off the top of my head. I don't know what our ordinance says and and so.
No, I remember that, I remember the City of Wichita Council having a similar conversation where individuals have protest rights, but to take over a roadway for an individual wanting to have a parade, even individuals with parades have to get permits to use that roadway. But no, yes, that's correct.
Sure.
Unless you're protesting permits.
Give me a pro permit to protest permits. Okay.
It's getting late.
I like writing memos of.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't need this answer right now. I just mean just during the discussion of this or.
Well, I'm sorry, but I can get that for you, Councilmember. I apologize. I was not fighting it that quickly.
Okay, well, we don't need to to hold this meeting for that research. Give you a chance to go do that and report back to us, okay? Very good. Any other issues we need to discuss?
There's something I want to bring up. I sent you an email about it. Um, I I think we need to look at upping the spending limit for the city manager. With the cost of goods and things going up, uh, he may not have a high enough limit now in case of an emergency. Uh, and this example I cited was uh like the uh what happened on Douglas down there at Douglas and Hillside where they had the water main break and it caused a huge hole and they had to fix the water main and the street. And I'm sure that was not cheap, and I would guess that would exceed your spending limit, and I wouldn't want a hole setting there until council can get together and approve the twenty thousand dollars or whatever it is it takes to fix it.
Yeah, something we can look at being our comprehensive financial policy that we'd bring before you. If you wanted to look at that, I can put that on the agenda. Um, there is some vague language in there that says emergency, if it's emergency, it's unlimited that we put in in twenty seventeen, and that's kind of what I use for that is it's 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 pretty, you know, emergency, meaning we can't give service to a a a home or a or a group of homes, and then I'll bring it up to at the next available council meeting or at the next council meeting that that, once we receive the invoice. So that's how that process went. Very rare. Um, is this occasion, but.
Kick this off in my mind.
Yeah, that's what you're discussing. Yeah.
I I would have thought that you'd had a higher limit than fifteen thousand.
That's ten.
Just approved it. Yeah, ten. I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
Yeah, well, I think that was appropriately handled. He, they went on and did the work and and brought it to the next council.
And if there's something in the in the rules someplace, then we we just need to know what that is, but I wasn't aware of anything that let you do that.
In the the day to day, I don't have extreme issues. Uh, you know, if it, if it can wait, it can wait. But the emergency, I I think we triggered an emergency and that's kind of where it puts me in a little awkward situation, but I think as long as we report it and talk to you about it, I think everybody was understanding of what happened and why we made that choice.
Okay. So any other discussion or future issues?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Dean.
I move, I move we adjourn.
I guess.
Two is the second?
Oh.
Greg.
Who was the second? Who was the second? I need to know who the second is. Greg, thank you.
Apparently we weren't done with.
Okay.
Got to make an announcement real quick. Next, next Tuesday, seven o'clock. Workshop is a joint workshop with the Planning Commission to discuss the um comprehensive plan. So just, just to let you guys know that that's coming up, we're going to do uh this phase two of the comprehensive plan and then hopefully get it down, down the road.
Okay, very good. Thank you for the information. Anything else to discuss before we vote for adjournment? Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Dean and a second by Mr. David to adjourn. All in favor, say aye. Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Dean and a second by Mr. David to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. That motion carries five to zero.